The Oxnard Planning Commission regular meeting for Thursday, December 3, 2020. And we have roll call please.
Chair Frank?
Here.
Vice Chair Sanchez?
Here.
Commissioner Travis?
Here.
Commissioner Dozier?
Here.
Commissioner Fearing?
Here.
Commissioner Meyer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our pledge of allegiance. Vice Chair Sanchez, could you lead us please?
Yes, put your heart over your, hang over your heart and say with me, I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag. Of the United States, America.
America.
And to the republic.
Republic. Which stands.
For which stands. One nation.
Under God.
Under God. Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you very much. Moving to item C, public comments. These are public comments on items not on our agenda. Do we have any requests for public comment?
Um, no, we don't. We have one for item F1, but not for items not on the agenda.
Oh, thank you very much. Moving to item D. This is our consent agenda. We only have one item, the approval of minutes from our November 19, 2020 meeting. Everyone have an opportunity to review. Any comments or corrections?
No corrections.
Okay, I'll move to approve.
A second.
We have a motion by Frank and a second by Fearing. May we roll call?
Chair Frank? Commissioner Fearing?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Travis?
Yes.
Commissioner Dozier?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item E, commissioners, have any of us had any experte communications concerning any public hearing items that are on our agenda this evening?
No.
No.
I, no. No experte communications.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving to item F1. This is continued public hearing. The Conoco Oil Gas Station and Alcohol Special Use Permits. Make their two separate special use permits. The first is permit number 20 hyphen 500 hyphen 02. And the second is permit number 20 hyphen 510 hyphen 08. And we have Rudy Gaez as our assistant planner this evening. So, Mr. Gaez.
Thank you Chairwoman Frank. One second.
Sure.
Okay, good evening, planning commissioners and members of the public. Before you tonight, we have the Conoco Oil Gas Station project at River Park, which is planning and zoning permit numbers 20 dash 500 dash 02 and 20 dash 510 dash 08. These permits reflect one project with the former being a special use permit for development of the site and the latter as an SUP request for alcohol sales from within the convenience store. This project is located on lot one of tract 6004 at the landing at River Park. Specifically, this is a request to construct a 3,442 square foot gas station and convenience store building, 1,160 square foot car wash building and an ancillary 875 square foot car wash equipment storage building. The convenience store proposes to sell beer and wine for off-site consumption.
It's already on.
ABC license type 20 and proposed sales of alcohol would be 7:00 AM to 12:00 midnight daily. Some background on the property. PZ 16 dash 200 dash 04 was approved by the Community Development Director in 2017 and this allowed for the construction of an access roadway and other associated improvements. This roadway was constructed in 2019 and this year. PZ 17 dash 300 dash 08 was a tentative map project adopted by the Oxnard City Council in 2018 to subdivide the project area into six lots for future commercial use within the project area. This area is now commonly known as the landing at River Park. As of this hearing date, two other development and design review permits have been approved by the Community Development Director, which allowed for the construction of two commercial buildings with drive-throughs. Here we have the south elevation of the approved development at lot four, which is a multi-tenant commercial building with a drive-through. And above, we have the front elevation for the development at lot five, which is a Panda Express drive-through restaurant. Zooming out, here is the project site on the southern corner of Town Center Drive and Ventura Road. And again, this is lot one of tract 6004. For better context, here is a site plan of the anticipated build-out of the landing. For reference, lot one, the project site is here. Lots four and lots five have already been entitled. As has Oakmont Senior Living to the south of the project site. This is actually nearing completion of construction and the Marriott Hotels have also been entitled. There is also an existing DDR permit here, the project to the southeast of the project site for a new Chick-fil-A drive-through restaurant. The project site is currently vacant and has street frontages along Ventura Road and Town Center Drive. Oakmont Senior Living is to the south of the project site and the future site of Chick-fil-A, as mentioned, is to the southeast. Here we have the zoning and general plan maps with the zoning on the left and the general plan designation on the right. These maps make a good point of showing the change through the tentative tract map approved in 2018 where lot one right here received that portion of land. The project as proposed is consistent with the commercial regional land use designation of the general plan as well as the west corridor commercial zone district of the River Park specific plan. Onto the site plan, the gas station canopy is represented here in yellow towards the center of the site. The 3,400 square foot convenience store in blue. The express car wash building in green. And the ancillary car wash equipment storage building tucked away into the corner over here. As proposed, there are 27 parking spaces, which meets and exceeds the parking requirements per chapter 16 of the city's zoning code. For additional context, a parking management plan was created to evaluate the parking needs of the landing to be consistent with the River Park specific plan. Based on the study, on the study, which only included lots two through six of the landing, sufficient parking was provided to meet, to meet the peak demand. Lot one, seen here, was not included in the analysis because it already meets and exceeds the parking requirement. Next, we have the elevations for the proposed convenience store. The north elevation is on top. This would be facing Town Center Drive and Ventura Road and the south elevation is below. And here we have the convenience store, east elevation to the top left and the west elevation is below. Next, we have the enter and exits of the express car wash building. And the northeast and southwest elevations. The northeast elevation is on top and the southwest elevation is on the bottom. Next, we have the elevations for the proposed gas station canopy. And here is the landscaping plan, which shows the project will provide 50 trees, which exceeds the required tree count from the River Park specific plan. As part of the review for the alcohol component of the project, the police department compiled a report showing the existing conditions near the project site. The crime rate within 1,000 feet of the site is 75% of the average for commercial properties citywide. Therefore, the site is not considered to be a policing problem. There are currently two establishments located within 1,000 feet of the project site that sell alcoholic beverages privately. These are Oakmont Senior Living at River Park and Clearwater Senior Living at River Park. There is no undue concentration under city, under city standards, but there is an undue concentration under state standards. And as far as a community input, a virtual community workshop was held on September 21st of this year. One member attending the workshop was generally against the project. To date, the staff has not received any other concerns or public comments against or for this project. The project was also reviewed by the Development Advisory Committee on May 27th also this year and conditions of approval from the DAC are included in the resolution. Some of those conditions of approval are as follows. Consistent with the applicant-provided project description, car wash operations shall be restricted to 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Loading and unloading for car wash delivery items shall occur during non-peak hours. And for this instance, non-peak hours are 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM Monday through Friday within the loading and unloading area onsite. Also onsite security or CCTV to monitor facility during off-hours is recommended. Some of the conditions of approval specifically regarding alcohol are as follows. Permittee and all sellers or servers and their immediate supervisors shall complete a course in responsible beverage service approved by the Chief of Police within 60 days of license granting and/or date of employment. Permittee shall install a video surveillance system that shall be maintained at a reasonable industry standard and shall be operated 24 hours a day. And sales of alcohol may only occur between the hours of 7:00 AM and 12:00 midnight daily. So, staff considers this project to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to section 15332 for infill development. As such, a notice of exemption will be filed. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the project as submitted to be categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to SEQUA section 15332 and approve resolution for planning and zoning permit numbers 20 dash 500 dash 02 and 20 dash 510 dash 08, subject to certain findings and conditions. This concludes staff's presentation. And does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Commissioner Chavez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, staff, for the presentation. Just a couple of comments for clarification. I, I see that there's a sales alcohol time. There's a time limit for the car wash. Is there a time limit for the fuel pumps?
Thank you, Commissioner Chavez. Not that I am aware of.
Okay, so, now, I know there are some gas stations that will do the fuel pumps closest to the building still be active, but the rest of them inactive. Well, first let me ask, is the applicant going to give a presentation?
No, no presentation, but he is here for any questions that you may have.
Okay, so then if he can just take that question down and then I'm just curious as to one of the conditions says that either a security need to be on-site or CCTV. Let me jump to that real quick. It says onsite security or CCTV to monitor facility during off-hours is recommended. That's COA number 178. So what are the off-hours? What are we considering to be off-hours?
Just as a point of clarification.
Okay.
The onsite security was eliminated and is not reflected in the resolution on this matter.
Okay, so, but we will still have the CCTVs?
Randy, would you like me to answer?
Sure.
Hello, my name is June Kim. I'm general manager for Conoco Oil. We will have 36-channel high-deflation camera system with DVR with the capability of recording up to three, up, up to about three months' worth of video footage. And that will be always turned on and available. And fuel dispensers will be on 24 hours a day. And station will be manned 24 hours a day as well.
Now, how many employees are going to be throughout the day? I'm assuming it's only going to be one during the late nine hours.
It will be probably about six hours at nighttime when there will be one person on duty. But throughout the rest of the hours, there will be about two, three, four, five, up to five people on duty.
Okay. Staff?
Yeah, excuse me. I'd like to sort of focus this on questions for staff. And then maybe we could do questions for Mr. Kim?
Okay.
So, Commissioner Chavez, if you have any questions for staff, please, please go further.
Staff, a question. What is the city standard for off-peak and on-peak hours?
God, would you like to take that?
Mike? No.
Does this work better?
Yes.
So, peak and off-peak hours typically refers to traffic rather than operational hours for businesses. And in that context, it's the morning hour commuted from 7:00 to 9:00 and the PM peak hour for traffic is 4:00 to 6:00 is kind of the industry standard that we'd be looking at.
Okay, thank you. In regards to the car wash, now, the, the concern that I had with this was that it's backed up against the senior, the Oakmont senior. Now, is there any steps being taken to be a sound barrier between the car wash equipment that it's rest up against that mine and the senior living at Oakmont?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Chavez. So, the car wash is currently set back about 10 feet to the adjacent property, which is currently not Oakmont Living. Oakmont Living is a bit more to the south, but this project will have to comply to the noise ordinance of chapter within the nuisance regulations of the city code.
Now, I'm, I'm curious as to if the city has any standard when it comes to gas stations distance from residential area. Because Oakmont is a living senior center, is there any standards that the city has as to how far a gas station is to be away from residential?
No, there is none.
Huh, okay. That's, alright. That'll be it for, at this time, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Questions of staff?
Yes.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Madam Chair?
Commissioner Dozier.
Okay, alright, thank you. Thank you, staff and thank you, Chair. I just have two quick questions concerning the, the senior living Oakmont and the, the one that's the underdevelopment is that on River, River Drive or Clearwater? I don't, I don't know which one is already finished.
Sure, Commissioner. Oakmont Senior Living should be completing their construction shortly. I believe Clearwater has already finished construction last year.
Okay, and in Clearwater, there is a restaurant that serves alcohol, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, and will the same type of, of setting be set up for Oakmont? Meaning it, it's a restaurant that serves alcohol?
I believe so, yes. It should be sort of like an all-inclusive resort type of atmosphere.
And, and those two facilities do not, will not have takeout of the alcohol, right? It's got to be consumed on the property?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, I, I just wanted to, just to clarify that, even though there, there, there's a mention of, of, you know, a possible saturation based on which standard you're looking at, but the two areas that are adjacent, alcohol is only consumed in the restaurant and it's mainly just for the residents and their guests and it's not customers from the gas station wouldn't, you know, necessarily walk to those locations and so forth and have a drink. It kind of separates the customer base. So, that's all I had. Thank you, staff, for the presentation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Did I see Commissioner Sanchez's stand-up? Did you see?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, yeah, Madam Chair. Would there be any concerns of being, with the gas station being so close to the river bottom and things like that? Would there be any, uh, need for security, say, you know, in late night? Like, say, twenty, uh, twelve AM to six AM, would there be any concerns about, you know, having, uh, people coming in that may, should not be there?
Not that I am aware of, but, uh, Mr. Swenson, if you're available to answer that question?
Thank you very much, uh, Commissioner, for the question. We looked at the, that concern carefully and we believe their security, uh, system is sufficient to meet the needs and to dissuade any, uh, loitering by any transient population, which, uh, was at one time a, a concern by, uh, some neighborhood folks.
Would, would this be because there's, they have security there in the, in the, um, facility, uh, you know, in the, they will have there at, at the gas station, security, or is this security that's maybe for the collection area?
Uh, not human security, but the fact that they've got, uh, uh, the security camera system and their staff is robust to, uh, address those problems should they come up. We evaluated other sites that they operated and, uh, found that they, uh, had a proactive stance toward dealing with uh, those kinds of problems and we foresee the problem arising.
Okay, thank you.
Council Chambers has taken away my ability to see who's on screen. I post in slide eleven, so I can't see if any other commissioners would like to speak? Any other commissioners have questions of staff? Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Um, I, yes, I do have a question. Thank you very much for the presentation, Seth. Can you show us the, the traffic locations, how one would get to the gas station from River Park? I think I understand how they're g- going to get to the gas station from Ventura Road, but can you talk about the traffic patterns?
Sure, one second.
I'm glad you asked that. That was my, one of my questions.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Commissioner. So, yes, most of the anticipated traffic would be off of Ventura Road. Uh, this would be the, uh, traffic going, uh, north slash eastbound with a one-way only driveway. Uh, there is also another driveway off of Town Center Drive right here, uh, but that is more of a, an exit. Another way to access the property would be the existing uh, street light right here. This was recently installed, so this is part of the previously approved backbone, as it's called, for the landing. So, hypothetically, if someone were, uh, driving from the collection, driving westbound on Town Center Drive, they could then turn left at the light and into the landing complex. Uh, this private street right here has already been constructed. Uh, there's curb gutter, streetlights, what have you. And, uh, one could then drive up this driveway.
That would be the only way to get there from River Park, right?
Yeah.
Will, will there be auxiliary signage for people to know that that is the way to get to the gas station?
Uh, yes, there is, uh, currently another development design review permit being, uh, reviewed for the signed program for the landing.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Chair Frank?
I can't see, Jeremy.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Frank. Um, I think most of my questions have been answered. There was a first discussion of having a security guard during, uh, the late hours, but apparently that was something that was removed. I was a little confused in reading the packet, um, but it seemed like that was what happened and we haven't, I haven't heard anything regarding having a security guard, only having staff in the convenience store. So, that, that is a change from what was initial, no security guard?
That is correct, Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. And then, what are the hours of the car wash in relation to the concerns about whether it be, uh, uh, noise nuisance?
Uh, thank you for that question. The car wash shall be restricted, um, from seven AM to ten PM.
Very good. Thank you very much. Uh, that's all my questions for now.
Thank you. Um, I have some questions for you. I thought the thrust of Commissioner hearing's question was how the residents living in River Park would get to the gas station. So, assuming that they came, um, from the residential portion of River Park and came down Ventura Road, um, is there a left turn into the gas station from Ventura Road?
From Ventura Road, one could turn left on Town Center Drive.
On Town Center, but the, the driveway into the gas station from Town Center is actually an exit. Isn't that the intent?
Uh, it is an entrance.
That the ingress is from Ventura Road and the egress is Town Center. So I, I, I see some confusion there.
The primary egress would be, uh, towards Town Center Drive, but you can also enter through Town Center Drive. Yeah. Uh, one second, Chair Frank.
Thank you.
So unfortunately, someone driving west on Town Center Drive can't turn directly into the project site. But if there was, uh, someone driving south, uh, from the other residential portions of River Park, they could turn left onto Town Center Drive going eastbound and then turn right into the project site.
Okay, uh, well, wait, show me that again. Is that where the traffic signal is? Is that what you're trying to show me? They would be able to turn in where the, where, no, down. Where to your right, where to your right, right there. Is that what you're talking about them turning in?
This would be one option. The other option is, uh, turning onto this existing light, onto Town Center Drive.
And then making a right turn right there at that driveway?
That is correct.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking is, you know, I was very concerned about this because it says on page seven of the staff report, primary access to the project site will be provided to the northwest of the property via Ventura Road through a one-way only driveway. This, this ingress will allow for access through two drive aisles, one to the north of the canopy, blah, blah, blah. Egress will be provided, egress means exit. Do you agree? Egress will be provided to the northeast of the property through a shared driveway, which I wanted to ask you what the word shared meant in the context of this paragraph. Egress will be provided to the northeast of the property through a shared driveway towards Town Center Drive. So, who's it shared with?
That driveway would be shared with lot two of the landing. This is the project currently under review.
And in, in connection with lot two, um, is it intended to be an in and out driveway? Or just an egress driveway like you're presenting here?
It would be both.
Okay, well then, I'm not understanding why this staff report says it will be egress. So, I just want to be clear on this because this is very, very important for traffic flow. And, and access, if there, there's no left turn from Ventura Road into the ingress, um, you're anticipating people are going to be going in through the egress. Is that right? Is that the understanding here?
It would be egress and ingress. Sorry for the confusion.
Um, okay. Then it goes on to say secondary access to the project will be provided via a private street directly to the east-southeast of the property. Can you show me that street on a map? I'm trying finding it, uh, in the staff report and I, I, I can't, I can't find it. Show me this, um, private street, please.
Sure. So the private street that I was referring to is the existing backbone, uh, which goes directly through lot two.
Where?
It mostly, uh, goes east to west, as well as, uh, north, south, and this section.
How do they get to the car wash from this private street?
So.
I, I couldn't see a private street on this.
So the backbone is located to the south of this and they would go through lot two and the entrance to the car wash would be right here. It's a shared access and they already have a reciprocal ac- access agreement.
I, I, I understand. It's just, I, I'm on my, everyone's faces are looking. I can't get every guess. Okay. I'd like to see the private street. I know I keep asking, but I'm not understanding where you're trying to show me.
So this right here is the, uh, private street.
With the blue line? That blue line?
Uh, Chair, uh, Chair Frank, yes, in effect, the blue line that Randy was tracing is where the private street is located.
Okay.
The graphic that we're sharing, it shows, um, a faint image behind it of the improvements. So I'm not sure how well it's coming across on all computer screens. But if, if one was in a vehicle on Town Center Drive and, uh, Randy, if you could follow along here with me. If you're on Town Center Drive and you came to the four-way or to the intersection right there, you turn south, uh, as if you're heading towards the hotels.
Right.
And right where his, uh, the hand icon is,
Yes.
is where the private street goes, uh, both east and west along the developments.
Okay.
That it goes to the west and effectively terminates there and turns into a, the shared driveway that would cut across, uh, lot two.
So they have to go through the parking lot of lot two to then reconnect to the, the private street in order to then snake around behind the car wash and then make the right turn on Ventura Road to get in?
You're not reconnecting with Ventura Road as you're going through lot two?
No, no, I, I know that. I didn't, I didn't mean to say that. I said you would come through the parking lot of lot two and then you have to make a left turn? Or how do you get into the lot one from lot two?
You, you're correct. You'd go through the, uh, the, the parking, uh, area of lot two into the gas station by turning left into the gas station property.
Where, where is that entrance?
Uh, Randy, if you could show, if, if you're the vehicle, where would we turn into? So that, that's to get into the car wash.
I see.
Further north from there.
I see. So, so people who are leaving lot two through the egress on Town Center Drive have to, they're confronting a queue lining up for the car wash. Am I understanding that?
That is where the entrance to the car wash would be, how long the queue for the car wash would be. It's not anticipated to cross back over that property line.
Well, they weren't expected to cross over the, um, the traffic conditions that we instill that the Starbucks on Rose and Gonzalez either. Um, I, I know there's an eight-car queue, uh, anticipated with this project. I'm just, uh, so, so we're just going to hope that the queue doesn't end up, um, at that curve going into the, into the queue.
Staff would make the observation that different uses have different queue lengths that go along with them typically. Uh, a drive-through ATM typically has one of the shortest, uh, queue lengths.
Right.
A car wash will have one that's longer than an ATM but shorter than a fast food establishment, um, is a observation that we would make. And there are certain, uh, uh, brands that have a cult-like following that might extend beyond that.
Right. Um, can you tell me, can you tell me where is the closest car wash to this location?
Uh, one second, Chair Frank.
Uh, on Oxtown Boulevard, we know that there's one over in that location.
Yeah, so the water drops we put over there on Gonzalez and Oxtown Boulevard.
That, that sounds correct.
Yeah. Okay, and how many people live in River Park? Do we know?
I don't know if we have the number of residents, but twenty-eight hundred, uh, dwelling units.
I see. Okay, um, okay, so you, you straightened that out for me, um, and there's reciproc- there's some kind of reciprocity with lot two for access through their parking lot?
Yes, that is correct, uh, between all lots one through six of the landing, actually.
Well, I understand there's reciprocity for access to the private land. Um, but lot one has reciprocity with lot four?
Chair Frank, the way that the, uh, landing has been, uh, designed and considered is to have the reciprocity for all those properties, uh, to gain access. The, the whole notion of the parking management plan that Randy, uh, shared with the team really talks about how, how the landing really has been designed in consideration of everything that's happening there.
I, I just want to have, and you know, I want this on the record basically that traffic can go through all the parking lots of lots one through six?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and one other quick note, uh, while, while we've been having this conversation, I've, I've confirmed that the closest car wash, this particular location is the Bliss Car Wash at Vineyard, um, at, at River Park.
At where?
Uh, Vineyard and, uh, and River Park.
The, um, okay, thank you very much for that. Can you tell me, uh, Mr. Colowitz, when the idea of putting a car wash and a gas station on this parcel came up?
It was anticipated as a potential development with the River Park specific plan itself. It's something that's been anticipated for, um, for a time that's been longer than I've been here because it was included within the parking management plan.
I, no, I, okay, maybe, uh, let me be more clear. I understand that commercial was part of this specific plan for this parcel and the adjacent parcels in order to create what we are learning to call the landing. Um, I'm, I, you know, when looking at River Park, um, I have, uh, I, I see the commercial development, I see the retail development. I understand what's included in the concept of commercial. I'm wondering when someone, rather than putting, um, uh, something more consumer, well, I shouldn't say that. When did that idea of, of gas station come up?
This, the specific answer I can give to you is the formal application came in and, uh,
When was that?
As part of this application, uh, Randy, do you have a date for when the application was submitted? Although, uh, Although, the concept has been floating around as part of the River Park specific plan development as an allowed, a use that's allowed with the use permit.
I'm sure it's allowed. Is there any solar component to this project?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Is there any solar component to this project? Do we have any solar requirements? You know, we, the planning commission, have been talking about trying to get solar off the ground for new projects. This is a brand-new, new, new, new. And I'm wondering if there's any solar component for the lighting for the 24 hours for the area where the gas pumps are? And I'm pleased Commissioner Chavez clarified and got this specification for the hours that there would be people there or anticipated to be there. So, I'm wondering if there's any solar component?
Not as proposed with the application, but it would have to comply with all current California building codes.
I understand. So, the answer is no. Again, okay.
Randy, would you like me to answer?
Sure.
We are intending to put solar panels on the canopy building and all the buildings as well as have a battery storage system to be able to do things like low shedding and be up if there's brownouts and blackouts.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I wish that had been put in the staff report. That, to me, is fantastic. Thank you so much, Mr. Kim. You will be having electric charging stations. Is that included, Mr. Colowitz or Mr. Bayless?
We'll defer that question to Mr. Kim as well.
Okay. And let me see what else kind of come in.
Chair Frank, if I could, we've also verified that the application for this project, the specific project, came in April 22nd of this year.
Okay. At the community meeting, it was made mention that there was one resident who had some opposite position, opposition position. What was the basis for that?
Her comments were mostly against the project as a whole. She believes that there were too many gas stations in the city and she also had a concern about the alcohol portion of it.
Okay, too many gas stations in the city or that a gas station wasn't needed at this location?
She did not specify.
I see. Okay. Okay, that's all I have for staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
I just have one more question, if I may.
Sure.
To staff, I know we talked a lot about the traffic patterns in the area, but at the intersection of Town Center and Ventura, I know it is a protected left turn when turning to go south of Ventura, but are motorists able to perform a U-turn when it's a green arrow?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Chavez. I do not know that at this moment, but I can get back to you.
Okay.
That's an important question. That's a good question.
And I wanted to ask, because maybe I missed it, but Marneke's, when the gas station displays their prices, where were those planning to be placed on the property?
I'm sorry for clarification, just the monument sign that shows the gasoline prices?
That's correct. I don't know if I missed it or overlooked.
No, this is, that sign would not be part of the submittal, but it is part of the master sign program that is currently under review. As currently proposed, they are proposing it on the corner. It would be sort of like an L-shaped monument sign.
Okay. And final thing, in going back to the car wash, just to clarify that the car wash entrance, it's a single-car entry, but that the lane splits into two and then back into one, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you, staff. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. If there are no further questions of staff, Mr. Kim, can you make yourself available for any additional questions, please, that the commissioners may have?
I'll go.
Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Kim?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have one.
Ms. Josia.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Kim, for providing input into some insight into our questions. My question is, the gas station, the primary customer base for this gas station appears to be the upcoming hotels that will be developed. Is that correct? Or are the primary customers for the gas station, the residents of River Park?
Mostly, it would be mostly for the local neighbors.
Okay. Okay, because the reason why I asked that is because the way the roads have been laid out, it's much more convenient. I could see if I was a traveler staying at one of the soon-to-be hotels and I don't know the city, it's very convenient to have right there, almost on-site, a place where I can clean the car before I turn it in or I can gas up or I can pick up some beverages or something along the way before I hit the road. So, for the hotels, it's really convenient. But for the residents, it's an added step to get there because there's no, coming from the direction where River Park is located is really, you have to intentionally be driving there. If you're not intentionally driving, you'll probably just pass by it. Coming from the other direction and the wagon wheel development, it'll be a lot easier to get there. But I was just curious as to know whether or not the focal point for the customer base was the hotels or the residents. So, thank you again for your input. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Chavez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Kim. Just a couple of questions. Thank you for answering the two clarifying questions in the beginning. But I wanted to talk about the convenience store itself inside. I don't know if I missed it. I try to go back and look at the design plan, but how many coolers for alcohol are there gonna be?
There will be probably about four doors worth of alcohol.
Now, is that going to be on the backside, closest towards the cashier and the office? Or off to, yes, okay.
It'll be closer to the cashier.
Great. Now, are you guys doing hot and cold food?
We are not providing food service.
No food services. So, the open refrigerator island that's at the beginning of the store on the west side, what exactly is that for?
That will have packaged sandwiches, packaged salads. We won't be doing any cooking or roller grills or anything like that.
Okay. Now, you may mention that it's gonna be a 24-hour pump, fuel pumps. Now, to those patrons that don't have their debit card or credit card and only want to use cash, what are their means to be able to purchase fuel?
They will be able to come inside the store.
So, the store is never locked? It's correct?
We will probably make that determination during operation, but we always have the option, the staff will have the option to unlock if we do end up locking for a certain period of the graveyard shift.
Okay. Okay. I only know one other gas station that does that, that they have it open. And there's only one way in, one way out of the store, correct?
There's two entrances.
And after hours, after, let's say, 11 o'clock, it's going to go down to just one, right? Or what time will it just be one door?
Yes, sir. During nighttime, we will probably have the main door unlocked unless we feel that it's safer to keep it locked and let customers in as the cashier receive it.
Okay. And just once again, just to clarify, during those hours, those late hours, it's how many people?
From about midnight to about 5:00 in the morning, it will be one person.
One person, all right. Thank you for those answers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Kim?
Chair Frank, this is Scott Colowitz again. I wanted to let you know that there's actually two squares on the screen that say June Kim. One is clearly June Kim. The second one is actually Ann Walsh. So, there's another name there. And she wanted to make herself available as well to answer some of your questions, especially as it pertains to ingress and egress.
Okay. I wanted to... Oh, yes, good. Maybe she's the person I should speak with. Ms. Walsh?
Hi, thank you for, thank you for hearing me. Randy, I wonder if you could pull up the overall site plan?
Excuse me, I wanted to ask a question.
Certainly.
Besides having you explain the ingress from Ventura Road and the proposed egress and now ingress from Town Center, I'd like you to show me where the drive-through is going to be for Chick-fil-A.
Where the drive-through will be located?
Yes, please.
Okay, certainly.
You know, where that comes in and where that goes out.
Okay. So, I'll wait for the overall site plan to be on the screen.
Great, I really appreciate this.
And actually, yeah, that one. So, what I want to first start off with is Mr. Josia's question. And actually, I think several of you had this question, which is, how does this gas station work for the River Park residents? And I do understand visually, it does seem like there are a few steps you need to take in order to utilize this gas station. But largely, that's because of the constraints we had at the corner of Town Center Drive and Ventura Road and the inability to really work with the full site. Even though you see an entire site, there's only a portion of it that can be built on. So, Randy, if you could go back to the intersection where the light is at Ventura Road and Town Center Drive. So, what I want to clear is that, actually, if you're a resident of River Park, you have two choices for this gas station. You can either go Oxnard Boulevard or you can come down Ventura Road. If you come down Ventura Road, this is actually ideal. You come down Ventura Road, you turn onto Town Center Drive, and you just take a right and you flip right into the gas station. Right there, that, yeah, that's it. You just flip right into the gas station.
Why wouldn't they make a right turn from Ventura Road?
Why would they? Because they're...
Why wouldn't they make a right turn into the car wash or into the gas station right there off Ventura Road before they reach Town Center Drive?
Because that's a right turn in-only, traveling north on Ventura Road.
So, you're talking about a left turn onto Town Center Drive?
I am. I'm talking about people traveling south on Ventura Road.
Okay.
Yeah, so you travel south, you turn east on Town Center Drive and you just dive right into the site. And then when you leave, you can actually, you just, you're kind of reversing your speed, go back out the same way or you can travel down the main road. But anyone who knows me knows that I will take the route that's less traveled. So, I mean, I'm gonna do the easiest thing possible. So, it actually works out fairly well. The other thing that wasn't mentioned in the presentation I wanted to add that was interesting to the neighbors, the neighborhood committee, was the special fuel, June, that you're gonna be providing. And currently, the closest location to get that particular type of fuel is off of the Johnson Drive exit next to the Suncast Factory. And I know that that was a real, real, real good selling point for the neighborhood because they actually have cars that can utilize this particular fuel. And I'll let June talk about that in a moment if you'd like to. Now, to your question about the Chick-fil-A drive-through.
Let me ask you this.
Yes.
The slide we're looking at right now says proposed traffic signal. Is there going to be a traffic signal on Town Center Drive?
There is a traffic signal. The work on Town Center Drive is complete.
Okay, well, you know, I'm looking at a slide, which is the...
Totally, I understand. I understand. I should have updated that.
Yeah, you should have.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, if they're coming down Town Center Drive, now they see this gas station and they miss that signal, is there a left turn from Town Center Drive into the ingress/egress driveway to the gas station?
If they, oh, no, there is not.
There is not. There's a meeting, right?
Correct. Yeah, and in case you're gonna ask this next, there is also no ability for a U-turn at that signal.
So, then they would go up to Ventura Road, make a left on Ventura Road, and can they make a left turn into that driveway into the gas station?
No, no, they wouldn't do that. What they would do, what I would do as a resident, is I would turn right on Ventura Road and turn left at the State Comp Building, which is really a matter of, or even at the offices right across.
And then, what, turn around?
Yeah, and just go back to the light.
To Town Center and then come back in?
Right, yeah. There are plenty of opportunities actually on Ventura Road at that northern, north of Town Center Drive. There are not as many opportunities south Ventura Road.
Right. Okay, I'm sorry. Chick-fil-A?
Oh, Chick-fil-A. So, and currently, so the site plan is showing that Chick-fil-A has their ingress and egress for their, for their queuing. And Randy, I'll have you point that out real quick here. The site plan is showing a double-entry queue. So, they get in two ways. Same measure we just talked about, which is off of Town Center Drive, coming down the private road and then entering right here.
Okay, and this is the same way that people would come from the private road and go through the parking lot? So, you've got traffic coming in there to go into their Q and traffic going the opposite direction to get into the gas station?
Potentially, although I will tell you that I think the bulk of your business for this particular Chick-fil-A is gonna come from the main road with the stoplight. Randy, I thought, yeah, that one. I think this is where the bulk of your business is coming, at this stoplight.
And show me how they get in there.
And they're gonna turn right? And then they're gonna come right immediately? Right there, yeah, right immediately? Yep, or right, there you go. So, you bypass, you're really using that, the other road that was for the gas station is almost like your egress.
So, they're gonna be coming through Lot Three. I see how this is working. They're gonna come through Lot Three, cross over into Lot Two and get in the line?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and then that line comes out?
Right there.
Goes around and then they're going to make a right to get out?
They could either take a right to get out, as you see.
Or they could go left onto the private road?
Correct.
I see. I see. Okay, I see. All right. All right. That helps me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any questions of Ms. Walsh? I can't see anybody. Let me see here. There we go. Okay, no questions of Ms. Walsh? Okay, thank you very much. Anything else from Mr. Kim? Okay, thank you very much. Um, anything else from Mr. Kim that you want us to know? No?
Um, nothing else, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have any, I'll open the public comment. Uh, do we have any public comment on this item?
Um, yes, we have one public comment from Pat Brown. Let me give her a call.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Kim? You're going to have, you're going to have uh, electric car charging stations, right?
Um, we are looking into electric charging station. Um, there's a better chance that that the hotels, uh, the restaurants may have electric charging stations. So it may not be necessary for us to have a electric charging station, but we are looking into it.
Okay, yeah. Some people have, how do people charge those uh, bikes, those motorized bikes? Anybody know? You know, you, you see those bikes going down the street? I don't know. Are they battery? Are they electric?
I believe it's just something that they charge at home before the end of the day. I know I get a lot of passengers that board the bus and I see them struggle lifting those heavy bikes with the batteries.
Yeah.
Try to get them on.
It's just that we're go- we're doing so much to enhance our bike trails and make them longer and more recreational than just transportation-wise.
Hello?
And especially through River Park, and then once the the area, that wagon wheel is completed and that trail goes along the river and into that area, I'm thinking there may be a need for them to pull up and charge a bike. If that's the case. Because some places, you know, honestly, I tried to go to the industry suites once on my bike, and I pulled up to the valet, and I said, can we park my bike? I thought maybe they had a bike. No, you know, a bike valet. And uh, they said, no, they don't do that. And I, and they have no bike racks. So if someone went to the hotel on their bike, and they needed to park it or or charge it, the hotel might say no. That's why I'm asking Mr. Kim if he's going to have any electric charging. I think it might be a good idea.
We, we do have bike rack and bike like locker um, on site. Uh, we will consider having an outlet for uh, near the bike locker or and bike rack uh, for potential charging. Um, I I'm, I'm, I'm assuming that these people will carry their charging cords with them. Uh, you know, there's really no Yeah, there's, it, it, there's no special charging uh, cable um, for bike other than the cord that the battery came with.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, that, it's a good idea. Alright, Ms. Brown, I'm so sorry. Do you, do we have Ms. Brown?
Pat Brown, are you, are you there? Hello?
She's there.
Maybe she needs to unmute herself?
Yeah. She's on the phone.
Chair Frank, we're gonna attempt to uh, call Ms. Brown again, hang up and try again.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Kim, uh, just real quick, cause the Madam Chair, she brought up a good point and and jogged a question. How many lockers for the bikes and bike racks are you gonna have?
Um, I would have to look at the plan, but um, uh, we put in locker and rack. Uh, I'm not sure actually if that was uh, specified yet, but there was a placeholder for a locker and a rack. Uh, and we'll definitely have enough to meet the requirements.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I believe it would be a minimum of four uh, of four rec by the square.
Hello?
Hi, Pat Brown.
Yes?
Yes, you're live on the planning commission. You have three minutes to speak.
Are you on F1 yet? Cause I would like to um, speak for a minute on F1.
We're on F1, Ms. Brown.
Uh, yes, we're on F1. You can speak now.
Okay, so when you're on F1, let me know.
Pat, we're, we're on F1.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not hearing you very well. It's very muffled. So I can't, you said something, uh, some words, and then you said F1, and so I don't know whether you said yes or no, or what. Oh.
Yes, we are on F1 right now. You can talk, Pat.
Oh, okay. Okay, I, I would like to speak on this subject when, when it's time for me to do that.
Pat, it is time for you to speak on this item. We're gonna start
Uh, time for me to do that now? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, this particular location for a gas station, just for a gas station by itself, I don't think is appropriate. And the reason it is, is because you're coming from the freeway, and you're going north, and you come into this nice shopping center with all these, these uh, nice uh, uh, appearing uh, businesses and whatnot, and the uh, and the Target store and everything, but you come, the, the first thing you come to is this is gonna be this new gas station. I don't think that's an appropriate location. I think it decha- it, it um, it uh, lowers the, the value of the, of the, all the other businesses and the uh, housing um, that, that's uh, that will be behind it. And I just don't think it's appropriate. I also don't appre- uh, I think it's appropriate to be selling alcohol at the gas station. Um, because, you know, we have a lot of young people that use the, the stores and the, and the Target and the theater and so forth in there. And a lot of the um, young people that are renting apartments have, have uh, several people living there because there's, there's, it costs so much money to, to live there. So they end up, you know, having a, a lot of young people getting it together to put the money together to pay for the, for the uh, uh, ri- for the apartment. Um, just uh, to the north of there. And I just don't think it's appropriate. I, I, I think there are other locations um, that are, that are closer, uh, that are uh, further away from that, uh, closer to other kinds of businesses where uh, that selling alcohol is, is um, uh, you know, uh, uh, just normal. It's all done there in the area all the time. At that point in time, I would understand, but you know, one of the first things you come to is a, as you come over the freeway is this, is this gas station and, and, and they're selling alcohol. And, and then they're gonna go to a movie, or they're gonna go shopping. Uh, I just don't, I just don't think it's, or else they live there, uh, right behind there. I ju- I just don't think it's appropriate location. But, you know, I don't, I don't live there. I live in, in downtown. But uh, I um, I, I just don't think it's appropriate. Just thought I'd let you know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Madam Kirk, do we have any other speakers?
No, no, that's all. We only have one.
Do our post-public comment. Um, Commissioners? It's your pleasure.
Move to deliberation?
Oh, yeah. Anybody have anything to say on this item? Commissioner Chavez?
Um, I just wanna make a few comments that um, I, I think it's an asset to be able to have uh, this gas station in this particular area as we're seeing more developments take place. Um, I am concerned at the fact that our city doesn't have any standards when it comes to how close a gas station is um, proximity to a residential living area. Um, that does really concern me, um, because of a number of hazards that can um, occur. Um, I am pleased that the applicant didn't make mention that solar is being part of the project, and they're taking, in my opinion, a very aggressive approach to implement the solar, which I think is a great um, makes them a good neighbor to our community, um, and that's what we need in Oxnard. Um, again, I, I like that this project's very, it's designed very well. Of course, the traffic flow could have been done a little bit better. Um, but, you know, we are where we're at on that. Um, but I hope moving forward that our city looks into setting certain standards when we put gas stations near residential, because it's not just the senior living, but we have the two hotels there. Um, and but those are a little bit further down. Um, and I would love to see more of a sound barrier when you think about the equipment, um, the car wash equipment to that residential area. Um, but other than that, I could definitely support this project. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair.
I'm done, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like to thank staff and the applicant for the presentations and the input. Um, I'd also like to recognize that um, uh, this is a, a extremely difficult piece of land to develop. Um, just by the sheer, the location and the, the, the shape of it, so uh, I, I do feel that this is a good use of the, of this piece of property. Um, I, I do see it as an asset, uh, and I also see it as a uh, a, a needed asset as we continue to develop the north side of Oxnard. Um, once the wagon wheel comes online, and once we get back to whatever the new normal is, I can see um, with the hotels coming online, a, a need for uh, an additional um, gas station. Otherwise, you're going to have residents um, buying for a position for gas with um, the residents of the uh, hotels. So um, I can support this project as soon as, thank you, Chair.
Um, okay, well, in that regard, uh, I'm going, well, anyone else? Ms. Meyer?
Excuse me, let me get my
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Um, I think what would be helpful to me, and I, I do appreciate all the efforts of staff to uh, help us understand the, the ingress egress. I think I'm still left just a little confused around um, the situation with how the expectation is for how the um, Chick-fil-A um, customers will be expected to be exiting. Um, I guess I, I didn't catch the point about how it's gonna work well with that ingress egress spot um, coming from into Town Center Drive um, for the gas station that also looks like it's where a lot of uh, Chick-fil-A drivers would be um, leaving Chick-fil-A from the drive-through. So um, can somebody, either my fellow commissioners or staff, clarify how that was, how that is expected to resolve?
Commissioner Meyer, this is uh, Scott Colwitz. We'll go ahead and we'll pull up the uh, the plan again to try to explain that. But I will also say that um, the Chick-fil-A development right now is a different permit application that's still going through review, so the um, the finality of that site plan has not been defined, nor is it before us tonight, so I wanna be careful on how far we go down this path. So I'm not gonna talk about the drive-through locations and those sort of things, but
Well, Mr. Colwitz, it's, it's, it's interrupting, but what we do have on our table are reciprocity agreements for for lots one, two, six, to traverse uh, each of their lots. And so when you have that, and you have that reciprocity feeding in from Lot Two into Lot One, um, I think that's our area of concern. Um, that personally, I'm sharing with Commissioner Meyer as well.
And, and we agree with you uh, in, in those regards. So you're, you're thinking about this from the high level and the backbone and the overall ingress egress of the sites. That's something that's fair game tonight, and we could help explain that. So, as, Randy, if you could help me here with being the um, the magic wand. So if, if someone was on the Chick-fil-A site, so uh, Lot, Lot Two, and you either um, went through the drive-through, or you went in uh, and ate inside the building or on the patio, um, and you're coming out of your parking spaces, you would have a couple different options. Um, so one way would be uh, essentially if the hand icon is a vehicle, you can go from there to the west.
That's the only way.
And then you can go north from there, um, all the way up to Town Center Drive. And that's the shared um, ingress egress locations is one way to get out of there. The second way, if we went back to the starting position, if you're uh, leaving the property, you can go south onto the spine road. And then from there, head off to the east. And then I'd take a left from there to the signalized intersection, and go your merry way, whichever way makes the most sense to you at that point in time. And then the third way to get out of Chick-fil-A um, would be again, heading east, but this time through the parking lots. Um, and going over Lot Three, and eventually turning into the shared drive at that location where Randy's hand is right now. And then continuing over to the intersection a little bit further to the east, and then again, going up north from there. Those are really the three different ways that someone could um, exit that particular property.
Thank you, Mr. Colwitz. Um, and I, I do understand what you're saying in terms of the uh, Chick-fil-A uh, proposal being earlier in uh, the design and approval stage. Um, that said, and knowing the popularity of, of the Chick-fil-A in Oxnard, and the long lines that form there, um, it just does raise that concern with me that um, this, this creates the conditions for um, uh, a jam of sorts at that ingress egress point. Um, but perhaps um, that will just be worked out through uh, through driver's experience as they get familiar with that, and they realize that that's a very slow route to get out. Um, that's where I'm feeling like it's just gonna be a, a, a what-if, kind of a gray space. Um, I don't know if you can add any more enlightenment than that you already have to that. Um, that's just where it leaves me is um, something that, that could be, that could be a challenge going forward.
Uh, Commissioner Meyer, there, there is one other kind of universal comment that I'll give. So again, it's not specific about uh, Chick-fil-A, but about drive-through establishments in general. Uh, one of the things that I've been working with our team and our public works and traffic staff with is the concept of a transportation demand management program when it comes to our drive-through facilities. There's been a, a few projects that um, we've reviewed since I've joined the team here, where we've required a transportation demand management program for all of our drive-through um, establishments, and in particular in the landing, the, the the approvals on Pad D and E to the east of the site. Uh, both have these programs, and we would anticipate uh, future drive-throughs to include them as well. And in effect, what this, this program does is it makes us uh, think into the future about how our drive-throughs operate. It essentially starts creating a backup plan, if you will, in case queues start exceeding, uh, cars start exceeding the queue spaces in the drive-through lanes. Uh, and there's a number of different things that we could think about. Some of those are physical improvements uh, that could happen. Some are technology-based, if you will. Uh, you could think about uh, the, the handheld devices that um, are now a regular feature at many drive-throughs um, by staff. It could also in, uh, include additional staff members coming out to the vehicles to help kind of speed up that queue, if you will. It could also in uh include additional staff members coming out to the vehicles to help kind of speed up that queue, if you will. Uh, we don't exactly know what the future is gonna hold. Um, you know, several years ago, we weren't gonna be able to predict what mobile um. Uh, ordering ahead of anyone getting to a restaurant. Uh, we didn't just, we just didn't know that that was like gonna be a thing. So the transportation demand management programs also give flexibility to the Community Development Director and the Public Works Director. To essentially throw a red flag and say, this program, this queue is not operating as expected. And we're going to have um, we we the city retain the right and the ability to essentially reopen the. Uh, the operations of the queues um and keep working with it until it meets the city satisfaction. So I'll leave that as a kind of a general description uh without getting into more specifics. But it is something that we're aware of and we're actively trying to get ahead of as we see these developments uh being proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Colbitz. That that concept, yeah, assuming that that gets built into the agreement. Um, that sounds like a very promising approach. No further questions, thank you.
No, these are comments.
To the. Comments. Thank you.
Anyone else have any? I I have a few, I can't see anyone else, so um. I have a few comments. Um, we're called the Planning Commission. We're supposed to plan. We're supposed to not only look at the project that we're doing and, but we're supposed to work at city planning and. Do our best to provide for the future. After the fact, after a queue, after a traffic jam, after traffic collisions, after um. All kinds of congestion occur, how difficult is that to go back in and redo the queue? We do um access agreements. We do uh, you know, anything. Uh, just in looking at the Chick-fil-A um. Uh, queue, we've got an entrance from lot three directly into the queue where the queue starts. And you're going to have people come, so that's from the right as you look at the picture, and then you've you've got them coming in from the left. To also get in. Um, so you're looking at a jam right there. And then you've got parking in the back, so people who are trying to back up and get out can't get in or out because you've got people riding home. To get into the queue. Then you've got people leaving if they don't use the private road in the back. They're going to be heading toward the town si- the town center drive um egress driveway. Um, unless they need to turn left and and go toward Ventura Road, then they will take the back road. So that they can get the traffic right to make the left turn to get to Ventura Road. But other than that, um, if this is a total traffic jam, um, I agree with Commissioner Meyer. At the confluence of. Lot two and lot one where there's in and out. From lot one into lot two, uh, right where we've got a queue forming for the car wash. I don't think eight cars is enough for the queue at the car wash, especially given that you can anticipate. People from Wagon Wheel are definitely going, would definitely go there. I see this as something that's going to service Wagon Wheel. Far more than residents of River Park because River Park, they're gonna exit on Vineyard. And go to the one on Oxnard Boulevard rather than snaking their way through the neighborhood and. Going through the contorted turns that they need to do to get into this parking lot, uh, this uh, not parking lot. Um, there's the gas station and car wash. So as much as I I am just thrilled with Mr. Kim. Uh, I think this is a a great thing, but it's in the wrong place. Uh, this land is capable of holding up to five stories. I I hope you saw that in the staff report. Um, this is not confined to a single level something. This is a prime corner. This is a prime corner, Ventura Road and Town Center. This is a prime area. And it can, it has capacity, you know, when you study property and I I don't use the line on, but I will just hear. Um, when you study property in law school, there's something called the highest, highest and best use of a piece of property. And um, I I just, I just don't see this as the highest and best use for this parcel. Especially uh given the traffic concerns we already have. And what we are able to project as future problems that we we do because we've seen. All of us have seen what happens when there's no planning. For that, and we can see it just on this little map. So um. Mr. Kim, please find another spot. Um, but I I have to vote no. I just don't think it's the right spot. Especially with the adjacent uses. If if Chick-fil-A moves down, maybe they take a different spot. So you don't have the overflow into. But this is a prime corner. Plus, you can enter, it's going to have the traffic, but you know, door, because they don't wanna stop to wait. At Ventura Road, start to make the right turn, so they're gonna cut through the parking lot. To get onto Town Center Drive, we see that all the time with gas, gas stations that are located on a corner. So, you know, I I I just, I just don't see this as an appropriate spot. Thank you. Anyone else?
Chair Frank, this is Scott Colbitz. Um, just, we we mentioned it briefly earlier and maybe we didn't provide enough information, so I just wanna make sure. That it's on the record for everyone's clarity. The site is a constrained site. Um, if we could pull up one of the uh site plans again for this project site. The the top, well, the top corner of the actual property, or quarter of it. Um, has infrastructure running underneath it. So Randy, if you could, if you could trace the the line for us. Um, actually, a little bit, little south of there, it's that line right there where your hand is going on. That's where the old right-of-way used to run on this property. And underneath the land to the north, there's significant amount of uh infrastructure that cannot be built upon. So it forces all the land to the south of that particular, uh, or all the development to the south of that particular line. Uh, in term, in terms of developable land and uh pro formas and actually making a project pencil. Um, while the zoning would technically allow a five-story development to occur here. Uh, it would be fairly constrained and and I'm not certain if that could actually pencil one way or another.
I I I'm not suggesting that there be a five-story anything. I'm just suggesting, first of all, if you've got those infrastructure constraints. Why would you then make a lot this size uh for someone to put anything on it? That whole corner could have been a park or the dog park that everyone had a big fight over where to pick the dog park and River Park. But it's like it would have been a perfect spot. But anyway, I'm just saying, that's not my concern. My concern is dealing with the plan that's before me now. And the plan that's before me now is, this is either the wrong project on this property. Um, fix the ingress and egress, fix the confluence of lot one and two. Um, fix that because it's going to be a problem. We we can, we can visualize it right here. So I I I uh, I, but. Thank you for the information, but it doesn't alter my opinion. And it's only my opinion, but um. That's very hard. Thank you very much.
We just wanna make sure that the information was out there.
Yes, I appreciate it. Um, okay. Very well. Uh, Commissioner?
Uh, Chair, I I just had a a a few other comments and um. I I I shared some of your concerns with um with the location. However. Um, I don't see a a better use for this property and I say that because. Uh, with the addition of two new hotels, that's going to provide a lot of um. Meeting space and 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 space for people to have conventions and so forth, so I don't see a a a office building. Uh, which I think was the original intent, working anymore. And not to mention, there's several um. Half-field offices across the street from this location, so um I uh. And with the shopping center um just down the road. Uh, the this this particular, the 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 gas station offers a um. A a a convenience that currently doesn't exist. So um, in in my opinion, I I I think it's making best of of the of the of the land that we have. Thank you.
Um, my my um comment to that, Commissioner Dozier, is getting off the theory or getting off of the one-on-one. Um, probably with Vineyard, um, at the same free force park. And uh, the Shell Station is right there. That's the one they're gonna see. That's one they're probably gonna go back to. Um, as far as turning in cars, uh, I I don't, is there a car rental place there? Um, I I I don't know. Um, I I. I I never suggested a five-story anything. I'm I'm merely saying that if. We zone through that in this typical plan, it's provided for, um, you know, uh. If if I can think of many things that could be, uh, even with the um constraints of the rim of it. So, um, and the staff reports that it, it had to be five feet of anything there. Utility. So, anyway, yes, Commissioner Chavez.
Madam Chair, I I don't wanna continue beating this horse down any further, but I'll just make a comment that. Um, this isn't the first project that we're actually getting where residents or motorists are gonna have to snake through a project. Um, if we recall, um, the project uh development over there on Fifth Street. And Victoria, um, where the Poyloco, where the gas station, um, the Jack in the Box. Residents that are traveling west on Fifth Street have to turn down, um, I believe that street is Southampton. And then they snake through the parking lot to get to the Poyloco, to get to the gas station, to get to the Jack in the Box. Because nobody's gonna go all the way down to Victoria, bust a U-turn and and pull into the gas station. So this isn't.
Doing all the time.
This isn't the first time that we're seeing these types of projects. Is it ideal to see these types of projects? No, it's not, but developers do their best to develop on what they have. Um, that's why I support this project for that simple fact. Now, do I believe something else could have been beneficial to this area? Of course, but with the information that there is infrastructure underground that can't be developed on. Um, and to think that we can uh jigsaw, if you recall, Madam Chair, um. The development by the old Amar Ranch, how they L-shaped seventy uni- housing units. Um, into a small parcel, uh, it's one of those things that are just.
It was L-shaped.
The the, exactly, the L-shape, but to fit all of those housing units and the amenities were, it's just not ideal. Um, but again, those are just the comments. I don't wanna continue beating this, but. This is the best usage, in my opinion, and I know I haven't been on the commission as long as you, but in my opinion. And as a resident born and raised here and lived in South Oxnard. Um, this is the best usage for the area because of the fact of the limited. Number of gas stations in the north. Now, if you wanna talk about comparison between north and south, well. If we were talking about putting.
We should talk about that.
Okay, well, I'm just gonna say that.
We have a.
Because of the lack.
We have a place coming about.
Lack of gas.
Potential gas station in South Oxnard. I don't think we should be discussing this.
Okay, well, I I didn't bring up a particular project. I was just stating the fact. There is a limited number of gas stations in North Oxnard.
Council, council, can you, someone intervene here?
If there's no further comments from my fellow commissioners, I'll move the recommended action to end the meeting.
You're moving to end the meeting?
Move the recommended action proposed by staff so that we get through the meeting.
Oh, thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Chavez, it's seconded by Sanchez. We'll call it, please. Hello? E.
D.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Dozier?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferring?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Chair Frank?
Well.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Um, we'll now move to. We'll now move to uh item G, study session slash report.
Chair Frank.
Do you have anything?
Yeah, this is Scott Colbitz. We don't have any uh study sessions or reports to present to you today.
We'll move to item H, planning mission business. Any business? I don't have any business. Okay, seeing nothing. Move to item I, community development staff updates. Mr. Colbitz?
Yeah, Chair Frank and fellow commissioners, thank you. Uh, just uh three uh uh quick, brief ones for you. So November thirtieth, uh, this this past Monday, uh, we had a director's hearing and approved a couple of projects that we thought you might be interested in. Uh, the first one was the Arctic Cold Storage Project. It's another development at the Saculca Farms uh Business Park that you helped review. Uh, this project, it's uh gonna be in the southwest corner of the site. It's a six hundred thousand square foot building approximately, just a little s- little smaller than that. Uh, for the purposes of cold storage uh for uh primarily our our local agricultural farms, if you will. So that is a project where the applicant is very eager and we anticipate that they will be moving forward with uh their construction as soon as they possibly can. So we wanted to let you know about that. Also, at that same meeting, the Community Development Director approved. Uh, the building for the Navigation Center, which is proposed to the north of our City Hall complex. However, the use um for the Navigation Center is a decision that's going to be before the Planning Commission. So at your next meeting on uh on December seventeenth, I'm gonna have a use permit as well as a density bonus item before you. Um, regarding that particular project. Um, so one one way to think about that is the shell of the building has been approved, but the uses inside are going to be before the Planning Commission. So uh more more to come on that shortly. If I jump forward to Tuesday night, the city council met and uh just a quick follow-up item. Uh, they had their second reading for the village specific plan uh amendment and development agreement amendment. Uh, the second reading uh was conducted, so that uh is now thirty days away from effectuation. And on December tenth, coming up here in a few days, uh, just a quick reminder that that's a day the Coastal Commission will be meeting. Um, and it's expected that the Coastal Commission Executive Director is going to find that the city council's. Adoption of the Coastal Commission suggested modifications to our short-term rentals um are indeed consistent with what the Coastal Commission told us to do. Um, so I just wanted to remind you all that that's something that's coming forward. And then, as I alluded to, uh, your next meeting is December seventeenth, starting at six o'clock. It's one item on your agenda, again, the Navigation Center Use Permit and Density Bonus Project. And with that, that'll conclude your calendar year. So we thank you all for your diligence and participation, so thank you very much.
May I inquire, officials, um, December seventeen, any, everyone going to be here? Commissioner Meyer? Dozier?
You're asking who is going to be here, correct?
Yes, yes. Sometimes it's difficult at the end of the year. Um, people are, you know, visiting or doing other things. So, um, everyone is, okay, I see at least a four. All right, very good. Thank you all very much. Let's stand to John.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, staff.